Amador County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February 28th in closed session. We had nothing to report under 1A county negotiations and 2A confidential minutes were approved. Wouldn't mind standing and we'll do the pledge allegiance. Okay, public matters not on the agenda, discussion items only. No action will be taken, any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that it requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for a report and recommendation for possible action at a subsequent board meeting. Please note there's a three-minute timeline. Anybody like?
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone on Zoom.
Okay, first in the audience, anybody in the audience? Okay, Zoom.
Go ahead Catherine, when you're ready.
Hi, excuse me, this is Catherine Everett, volcano resident. I'm calling because of my concern that we have no homeless respite in this cold weather. I mean, this is the worst storm here in what, thirty, forty years? As far as I know, there is no warming center for people who are unhoused. And I don't know if there are any plans to open one in the next day or two, but it's going to get very cold in the next few nights. And I just wanted to express my concern that, you know, this has been an issue for years and it just doesn't seem to be getting resolved. And I would urge you to try to do what you can so no one else dies on the street in Amador County from cold. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Approval of the agenda, we have some changes to go on. They have the addendums. I'd like to put 1B in between 3B and 3C, we'll kind of call it 3B1. I'd like to swap 3E and 3F so that Amanda from Fire Safe Council can do both of hers at the same time. And last but not least, the addendum 1A to 3J. A move. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Approval of the items on a consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There is one item on there that concerns all like Buena Vista property that some of my families have an interest in, so I'd like to recuse myself on that particular one. And it is, it's item 5D accessory rule corrections.
Okay.
And I guess Greg, would it be just that one item or there's like maybe there's multiple in there or probably just the whole thing? All 5D maybe?
Probably all 5D, just for simplicity.
Okay.
Does he need to leave the room just for consent?
Well, technically, but usually by the time he makes it to the door, he's voted.
Okay.
So I'm going to recuse myself.
There's no discussion.
We'll take that one separately then.
No, we'll just do all of them at one time.
Okay.
Quick and easy. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second. Okay.
Are you just doing the one that he's recusing himself?
No, I'm doing them all, the full.
Okay.
The full consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, 3A regular agenda, discussion with Sheriff Redmond and OES Coordinator Sergeant Bellotti regarding the new FEMA designation for Amador County relative to the winter storms experienced in late December 2022. Good morning Sheriff.
Morning Mr. Chairman, good morning gentlemen. So to get started, I want to obviously introduce Sergeant Jeff Bellotti, who is the OES Coordinator. And I want to thank him for what he's done since these storms started in December 27th of last year. He has worked tirelessly to get us where we are today. And the man-hours and the time that he's put in and the effort to corral everybody and continue to get all those numbers and that process, he's just done an outstanding job. And I'm very thankful for what he's accomplished and where we have gotten today. At the same time, he's also managing seven to eight grants. And we have multiple projects that he oversees that are still need to be done. So I just want to let everybody know what, that I'm thankful and what an outstanding job that Jeff has done. And I will let Jeff introduce the FEMA group.
And I will agree with that wholeheartedly, don't you dare burn him out though. We can't lose him.
Good morning. Do I need to introduce myself?
Please.
Sergeant Jeff Bellotti, OES Coordinator, Amador Sheriff. I want to give you guys a brief update since the last time that I came and spoke to you a few weeks ago, just on kind of what we've done moving forward with the winter storm. And then I'll get to the representatives from FEMA and CALOES who are here to give you a little update on kind of what's coming. Since I last talked to you guys, I was able to coordinate a community outreach day that included a lot of local and out of the area nonprofits and other agencies to help our victims of the winter storm. And it was very successful, we had forty-five individuals show up and receive assistance that day. We held it at Amador High School. Since then, I was able to coordinate four days of preliminary damage assessments with CALOES, FEMA, SBA. And we went around and did both the public assistance side and the individual assistance side. That is what led to the additions to the county, city government, special districts into the major disaster declaration, which happened on February 17th. The following week, February 22nd, we were added to the individual assistance side, something that I've done a little research on through the state, CALOES, and nobody could remember this county ever being added to that. So that's pretty big for us. Moving forward, we have an applicant's briefing set for public assistance this Thursday. So that means everybody from the city governments, county governments, special districts that were affected by the storms that submitted information to me regarding loss of damages, lost revenue, they can come to this meeting and we're going to get the reimbursement process started.
Question on that.
Yeah.
Does that also include like individual assistance or is that?
No, no, I'll get to that.
Okay.
This is just, the public assistance side is just for county government, city government, special districts.
Okay.
So that's this Thursday. And then moving forward, which is why these two behind me are here, we are going to be opening a disaster recovery center here in the community, in the county building. We are taking over conference room C and A for at least the next two weeks. It could be pushed out to a month. And we are going to have state, federal, and Small Business Administration in every single day, Monday through Saturday, eight to five, to help the community. They can come here, they can register, they can get help, and they're going to explain a lot more about that. Starting yesterday, we had FEMA reps in the field going door-to-door assisting people with registering for assistance. They were cut short because of the weather. I think they only were able to help about three before the snow started to hit and they had to leave. However, I got updated numbers this morning from FEMA that fifty-five individuals from Amador County have already completed their applications. So that's pretty good numbers for us so far, and that's going to continue through the next month.
What's the start date when you'll be in this building?
Setup is scheduled for tomorrow and opening at 8:00 AM Thursday morning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. That's only possible because of Chuck Ely. He was able to clear those rooms of all the meetings on short notice. We worked through the weekend to get contracts signed and up through today to get those reserved for us. So that's huge and I really appreciate that.
Well, if I may update that a little bit, thank you Jennifer for doing all the pushing around.
Yes, and Jennifer and Heather as well. So with that, if you have no questions for me, I'm going to introduce Summer Wright from CALOES and Ahmad Page from FEMA. And they're going to explain kind of the disaster recovery center, what comes with it, what to expect from it, and then answer any of your guys' questions.
Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you and good morning to everybody and all the members of the board. So the intent of the DRC, the Disaster Recovery Center, is to provide a face-to-face resource for survivors who were affected by the storms in January. And it's, the intent is to streamline the process and help navigate them through the application process, any appeals that, or any additional documents that are needed to move the application forward. On the FEMA side, we work in tandem with the Small Business Administration, which are programs and the Individual Assistance Program are kind of intertwined, so we work in tandem. And we also have Hazard Medication, who is our community educational outreach leg of FEMA, to also kind of help build resiliency for future storms. So that's the short story of the Disaster Recovery Center. It's a one-stop-shop resource where they can get assistance with the state and federal partners to kind of navigate them, make the process less cumbersome for anybody who has experienced this for the first time. And Summer is here to explain the CALOES component of the disaster recovery.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Summer Wright with CALOES Individual Assistance. I am the Local Assistance Center and Disaster Recovery Center Coordinator for this event on the state side. So with the state side of it, we are bringing in ten different state agencies to include Department of Motor Vehicles who bring in their resources into the center, their printers, their cameras, their beautiful blue screen that everybody loves to take a picture in front of. And with the state of emergency as well as the Presidential Declaration, DMV is also able to waive the fees to submit for a new, you know, driver's license, registration, pink slip, all of those things that we would have to pay for on a normal basis, right? So they're able to help them fill out their applications for all of those things right then and there, although they don't print the IDs right there on site. They do set up a system so the survivor will receive it, whether they mail it to, you know, a family member, or if the survivor has a PO box set up, or they set up a schedule for them to come pick it up. They make it really accessible for them to be able to get that resources quickly. That also comes into play, right, if they need to find additional identification for their FEMA application. If FEMA is asking, you know, do you have proof of identification? It's good to have that resource there to be able to provide them, you know, on-site. We also bring in EDD, you know, if survivors were affected by the storm and have lost wages, they're able to speak to an EDD representative right then and there. They, you know, they can fill out their claims, ask those questions, they can follow up on claims they might have already submitted. So having that resource readily available. We'll also bring in California Department of Public Health to provide vital records, right, if individuals have lost birth certificates, marriage certificates, death certificates. The great thing about having California Department of Public Health there is they're able to reach out to all counties and cities in California, right? They're able to have a bigger scope than the, the, the local, you know, public health would have for vital records. So, you know, if they weren't born here, they weren't married here, or the, you know, someone had passed away and it wasn't here, they're able to reach those records elsewhere, outside of Amador County as well. Another one that we bring in is Contractor State Licensing Board. This has helped to, you know, to guide them to not be scammed again, right? We don't want these survivors to be victimized twice. So being able to provide them resources of, you know, what to look for if a contractor does contact you to clean up your, you know, your property or whatever it is, the scams to look out for. So they help, you know, connect them with contractors, connect them, you know, pay attention to the licensing, obviously, make sure it's an appropriate licensing for these contractors. Another one we bring in is California Department of Social Services. The only state program that the state has to offer is the State Supplemental Grant Program, which runs in tandem with the Individual and Households Program grant that FEMA Individual Assistance brings in. I know this might sound like a completely different language to you guys, but I'm doing my best to explain it to you. So it is, it is a, I think it's a max grant of about $10,000 if I remember correctly. So it's another opportunity for survivors to apply for funding. Franchise Tax Board, bringing them in, right, if individuals have tax questions, businesses have been affected, California Department of Tax and Fee Administration as well will be here to kind of help those businesses who may have lost or people who need to file their taxes, who were affected by the disasters, their homework, homes were affected by the disasters. We will also have housing and community development here. If there's been any mobile home units or mobile home parks or private property, mobile home units that have been affected by the storm. HCD can answer questions about licensing, registration, entitlement, and all those types of things. We also will have California Vet Affairs, right, to have resources available for vets if they were affected by the storm as well. Did I hit all ten? I'm like trying to, trying to remember. I think I might have hit all ten. We will, you will also get a CALOES liaison, so you will have a person in the black polo out here to support. Their role is to really serve as that bridge and communication between the county, state, and FEMA. They'll also be communicating with me back at headquarters, you know, letting me know of any current unmet needs, you know, if survivors are coming in and they're hearing kind of a constant unmet need, seeing what we can do on the state side to get those resources out here, right? And, and they will be here to kind of just, just be that communication point for our state agencies and also have a CALOES presence here for your guys' community. We will be also using your guys' Disaster Recovery Center as a training opportunity as well to kind of build our CALOES cadre list to help, you know, in, in, you know, future disasters and with the disaster now. So you'll have quite a few CALOES reps here to support you guys and answer any questions and kind of just feed the information back, you know, to me here at the, at headquarters in Sacramento. Did I miss anything? We also will provide, you know, I know that FEMA kind of, FEMA has Spanish-speaking staff as well, so providing those translator services. We also have resources to bring in ASL interpreters as well, if that's something that the county needs. I know this has been a huge agricultural event, so there's been a lot of Spanish-speaking individuals, immigrant populations that's been affected, farm workers. So we've been doing our best to support those resources as well.
Thank you. You have anybody from the state insurance?
Yes, California Department of Insurance. I cannot believe that I forgot them. That's like one of the most important ones. Yes, California Department of Insurance will be here, they will be here to answer insurance questions, you know, they'll be here to help, you know, push forward if people are having, you know, issues with their insurance companies, if they're running into kind of roadblocks of getting ahold of their insurance companies, they will be here and available as well with a representative.
Go ahead.
If I'm following you, I'm just asking, I represent the city of Jackson.
Uh huh.
Hey Pat, pull your mic forward.
Sure population. And I tell them that, well, it's going to be on the website.
Yeah.
Dead silence.
Right.
And you'll be able to fill out the form on the internet. Dead silence.
Yep.
So could we send them here now?
Absolutely.
From, from the grave kind of, get them going?
Yeah, and that's kind of the point of the Disaster Recovery Center, right, is making it easily accessible to those, you know, you know, those older populations, those populations who maybe not be able to read and write, right? So being able to have those resources there, have, you know, volunteers there to help walk them through the process. Also FEMA has a tablet system that they utilize for registration where they can sit there with the survivor themselves and, you know, ask them the questions and go through the questions one-on-one with them as well, so making it as easily accessible as possible. That's why we bring these individuals and representatives here, so you get that face-to-face hand-holding.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
They pretty much read and write pretty well, it's just the computer thing they have problems with.
We've seen it all this disaster, so.
Dead silence is.
I know. I don't know how to use the internet.
It was said that about building resiliency for the future. What happens, for instance, Jackson Valley Irrigation District is in my, my district, but they had some levees wash out. Those levees, they were concerned that they may not be covered for reconstruction because they were more or less man-made without engineering or anything like that, which is pretty common in irrigation districts. Would something like that, when you're trying to rebuild resiliency, would that qualify?
Okay, now, there's some variables depending on if it's an independent water district and if who exactly benefits, if it's a sole water source for individual households. So there's, depends on if it's a part of infrastructure or if it is just your sole source of water for the home, then there may be assistance.
But this is, this is water for crops.
Yeah, so then that would potentially fall under the spectrum of the Small Business Administration or under Agriculture Services and USDA.
Okay, thank you.
Now, my question is, the, I have a lot of private roads up in my area. Some have road associations and some are, you know, the plot line of that road, you own that two feet of road or whatever you want to say out front of it. How can they get assistance? You know, what, do you, have you dealt with that before?
Yes, it's a common occurrence and we had other counties that are having similar scenarios. And there are grant assistance for private roads that lead to, that prevent access to the property. So if there is multiple households that are reliant on these private roads, then we would encourage all survivors that are impacted to register.
And if we can't get ahold, you know, like we have some vacant land, you know, that are associated with that road and we haven't been able to get ahold of the people forever, you know, how does that, you know, you know, we're talking some backwards areas.
Yeah, and, and that could pose a challenge for all that is affected because it is a portion thereof, so let's say there is a private road that leads to four homes, we encourage all four residents to register so that they can combine the assistance in order to make the necessary repairs.
Okay. Thank you.
Is something that can be done online or is it, do they fill out a paper form or what?
So they can register for FEMA assistance by a few different ways. They can come into the Disaster Recovery Center and register in person. They can register through 1-800-621-3362, which is 1-800-621-FEMA for the alphanumeric. Or they can create a, an account online with disasterassistance.gov and create a DAC account, which they can also register and upload additional documents if needed.
What if they've already spent funds to actually make, affect some repairs or, you know, on it? Would they be able to be reimbursed for that? Because the road needed to, to be usable.
Well, our, our grant assistance is based off of the inspection results at the time of the, it's based off the time of the inspection. And they can submit in any documents or consideration, but it's on a case-by-case basis, depending on if there's additional mediation that is required, but if they did some patchwork, but there's still visible damage.
If we, if we had photographs, would that suffice?
The inspector can view photographs of previous damage.
Thank you.
We do encourage that the survivor. Yeah, any of that document can be viewed at the time of inspection. And, you know, we don't, we encourage resiliency from the survivors to do whatever they can, you know, in the interim while they wait for the assistance, but they can definitely submit that documents for view at the time of inspection with the inspector.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and one other thing to mention, I failed to, just for the record, failed to mention my name and title at the beginning. My name is Ahmad Page and I'm the Deputy DRC Coordinator for this event. My apologies.
Yeah, I had a question. There's a party in Plymouth, they, there's a hotel, and I believe they rent out the bottom of it, but the lady lives in like the upper floor and had some wind damage, that's basically her upper floor would be her home. Would that, would she be, qualify for individual assistance, you think?
She can, if her primary residence is a room inside of the hotel, she can apply for her dwelling and the damages that would affect their dwelling. The remaining portion of the property would fall under the Small Business Administration for a low-interest, low-cost loan option. But it's, if the habitability of her individual dwelling was affected, she can register for FEMA aid.
Okay, thank you.
On the loans, is there, or grants and loans, maybe you can differentiate those, but is there a percentage that FEMA covers, a percentage that CALOES covers, and a percentage the individual has to cover?
CALOES does not cover anything. Unfortunately, CALOES doesn't have any funding to give. The only state program, like I said, is the State Supplemental Grant Program that goes hand-in-hand with the Individual and Households Program that FEMA brings in with their funding. So the difference between FEMA and SBA is FEMA is grants, SBA are low-interest loans. As far as what portion they cover with the SBA loans, it's really going to be based off the damage that was, you know, the damage that occurred as well as the insurance coverage that was, you know, that, that they have and how much was actually affected. I think it's like forty percent more in, in major destroyed damage. And then there's an insurance kind of, I, I don't speak to whatever cool mathematical problems they do on the backend with insurance, but for SBA, that, that's kind of how it works. And for SBA, it brings in the Economic Injury Disaster Loans, in which Ahmad's speaking about, which can cover businesses. So like her primary residence was affected, she could apply for FEMA and then her business underneath could potentially fall under SBA, which is the Small Business Administration.
Any other questions? Do we have any Zoom questions?
No, not at this time.
Anybody from the audience? Come on up.
Morning gentlemen.
Morning.
My name is Virginia Manner and I'm representing as President of the Jackson Creek Homeowners Association. As you're well aware, I'm representing them today. In this, as you know, we, we did have a lot of damage on our creek and we're working with the city on that and their grants to get dredging done, hopefully. But we have concerns because like you said Supervisor Crew, there are people there that are incapable or have no Wi-Fi or computers and ability, and it's been really frustrating, you know, to deal with it. So I'm glad we're going to have a recovery center. Do you have any idea where it'll be and how quickly it'll be set up?
Upstairs, eight o'clock Thursday.
Thursday morning.
And will they have regular hours?
Eight to five. Monday through Saturday, was that correct? Did I hear that?
Monday through Saturday, eight to five?
Eight to five.
Okay, upstairs.
Which room is that going to be in?
C.
C?
Room C, is that the one directly above? Okay.
And then A is right behind us.
Okay, and you'll have forms and information and be able to provide questions that may be off the regular scale?
Yes.
Of inquiries. So in our case, where we would be applying as individuals, but also as an association because we lost our retaining system, so we lost a lot of property value. because we lost our retaining system, so we lost a lot of property value and we are now not secure in our homes. So anyway, that's, we would be coming from two fronts. And so it kind of makes your head swim because I think all but two people are over the age of seventy going on up. So it's been a very difficult time at best and it's a learning curve. For all of us that are getting older, we know that after I read and highlighted and all of your information sent out by Supervisor Crew, you know, it's like, will I ever retain any of this to ask a logical question? So I appreciate you being here, I appreciate the work that the county and Jeff Bellotti and the Sheriff's Department's been doing. And I'm glad that we're going to have a resource center because I think for our homeowners, myself included, I'm going to have a lot of questions. How long will this center be set up for? Do you have?
As long as there's a need.
Okay.
At a minimum, two weeks.
Okay, and is it by appointment?
No.
So you just drop in? Okay, that, that's perfect. And I do have other questions about, we've had a few people, we've had somebody out from FEMA already to a few of the homes. And one of the things in question was they weren't going to pay for the HVAC system. And that's underneath our homes and there has been no heat in many of the places and totally destroyed systems. So that didn't seem really logical in the process of funding because heating is an essential, you know, in that. And they were told that it probably wouldn't be.
Well, I can speak to that.
Okay. That's fine, that, that was a question I had. So anyway, we really appreciate, and the question was asked also about if you've already done work. In our case, when it started to recede and we could get in, because these were in sunken living rooms, so we could move that night, we moved all night furniture up into a higher area and people remained in their homes with nowhere to go. But they've had heat, no heat. So that damage in the lower areas, the photos that everyone took can be used because we started almost immediately ripping out carpets, ripping out drywall, dripping out insulation, ripping out insulation so that it, the molding process wouldn't start. You know, to try and mitigate that. And a lot of people, after a lot of work, went ahead and buttoned things up. Some prematurely, we found out. So I just was curious about the heating situation, so. And the fact that a lot of people have tried to move on. So it's hard enough living without heat, but then when you have all these drafty areas and plastic on everything to try and keep from underneath the house and any rodents or anything coming in, hopefully they all drown. Anyway, I thank you for your time and thank you for all your help.
Thank you, Virginia.
So I wanted to speak to the HVAC inquiry. So FEMA does provide assistance for the HVACs, septics, sewers. These are critical components of, to ensure that the home is safe, sanitary, and secure, which is the intent of the FEMA program. So yes, we do have assistance for HVAC systems and we can have the ability to pay up to one hundred percent of the repair cost for that because it is a priority. So just to answer Virginia's inquiry, rest assured that we do address HVAC systems. I think there was another part to that, but that's the main point. And so, thank you, just wanted to make sure.
The biggest thing is for everybody to take pictures, 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 and more pictures.
That is correct. And then, oh, the other part, thank you for, because you dropped my memory. And also for this event, there has been disaster-specific approval for cleaning and sanitizing grant assistance as well, which has just recently been approved last week. So just to kind of touch on those two points of clean and sanitizing and HVAC assistance. And that's why we encourage everybody to come in.
Yep, I understand, appreciate it. What Virginia just brought up about her Jackson Creek complex, they're really in need of a levy in the future to create resiliency there? Is that something that FEMA would even look at?
Okay, so that would, that would fall under mitigation program. So that is parts and parcel from the Individual and Household Program. But I will say this, with the Homeowners Association, yes, they would have a two-pronged approach where they would look to seek assistance through the Small Business Administration for the Homeowners Association expenses for the common areas. And the Individual and Household Program can still provide assistance for the interior space of a condo or anything that is inside of a HOA agreement. So there's assistance for both sides of the court on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Ahmad, real quick.
Go ahead.
Frank.
Frank.
Just real quick, I know that you said that you wanted everybody on the street to register. Could there be a point-of-contact person that has all the names of all the other people that kind of acts as their advocate or you don't work that way?
Well, we do have, we make sure that privacy is also the most important. So information, you know, data sharing, all of that has to be kind of addressed within a ISAA. So.
So no point of contact, just everybody register?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Good. You know, talking about the individual assistance that can be available for roads that got storm damage, does it have to be like, oh, like a multifamily road or individual road or both?
Both.
Okay.
As long, if it's privately owned and it is a primary access to the property, it can be for multifamily or individuals.
Thanks.
Virginia, you had another question?
But we're talking outside of privately owned.
Come on up.
Okay. Okay, there were two questions homeowners had that were unable to make it. One is, is what about PG&E? We're sustaining heavy bills because we had to obviously put fans in crawl spaces, dehumidifiers and, you know, all these fans running everywhere. One homeowner's bill was seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars with no heat, just electricity, and this month was eight hundred. Now, people are on fixed incomes and I wonder if Cal has no funding, isn't there something that steps in during a flood to assist people with the high cost of utilities in that mitigation, in that restoration of efforts?
Can you step up to the mic?
Because we don't have options, you know, for utilities. It's PG&E and that's it. And I understand from the PG&E rep.
Go ahead and ask your second question and then he'll answer both of them.
Okay, and then the second question is for those who had deductibles. We have one that had a five thousand dollar deductible on their insurance, flood insurance, because they have mortgages. Another was ten thousand and one had to take a loan and the other one had to not, they still don't have any flooring or anything because they can't afford it. And now PG&E hitting them so hard, they really have no money. So I'd like to know about both of those things. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Virginia, for your question. To answer the first part of her question, FEMA does not have a grant-based program to address utility costs or increased costs of utilities, unfortunately. Now, we do have a lodging expense reimbursement for individuals who may have had to go into a hotel or other alternate lodging during the incident period where they can seek reimbursement for those expenses. The other part of the question was, I'm so sorry, Virginia, the second part? Okay, yeah, deductibles, yes, thank you. And so now while FEMA does not pay insurance deductibles, we do look at what funds that they do have on hand after any depreciation and deductibles. And we measure that against our site assessment and what our verified loss is at the time of inspection to see where there is any gaps as far as, you know, where assistance or grant-based program can supplement the disbursement that they receive from their insurance. So while we do not pay deductibles directly, the money on hand is factored into the grant consideration once we've did the overlay of that in, against our damage assessment or our verified losses at the time of inspection, rather.
I thank you. Jan, for anybody else on Zoom?
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Christensen. Steve, are you there? Mr. Christensen, are you able to hear us?
You've unmuted him.
Go on to George, if you'd like. He's unmuted.
Okay.
We do have George from the Small Business with his hand up too, on Zoom, if you'd like to.
Okay, well, that'll be it for three A, we'll go on to three B. Thank you, I appreciate you being here. Oh, was it?
Steve, is that you?
Yes, that's me, can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Virginia had mentioned quite a few people living in the apartment who do not have heat. I have met one of the people from that apartment who cannot move back into their apartment and is living in their car. It's cold. And Catherine Ebbett mentioned warming centers. So my question is to Sheriff Redmond and Sergeant Bellotti is when do they plan on declaring an emergency and opening up warming centers, not only for the homeless, but also for the people who were affected by the floods and the weather in January, so they have a place to go where they can keep warm and dry? So my question is for the sheriff and the sergeant.
Sheriff's coming.
Hi, Steve, thank you. So we opened up a shelter when we had the first, this incident first kicked off and we had zero people in that shelter. Since then, our threshold for opening up any type of warming center has not been met. We have several factors that we take into account, such as the temperature during the daytime is thirty-eight degrees for three consecutive days. We have not met that threshold. That's one and we have to meet several to be able to open up an actual warming center. So at this time, we have no plans to, I have no plans to declare an emergency based on this last storm that we've just, we've just had. The original, I did declare an emergency. And like I said, we did open up a shelter and had zero people in that shelter.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So I'll just add a little bit to it. Warming centers and cooling centers, before I took over this position, they were non-existent. Something we've never done here. Ann Watts and I started to develop a guide for that. It is not complete yet. It does have the majority of it done, however, it's not complete, hasn't been presented to you guys. It's going to go hand-in-hand with our Emergency Operation Plan update because when you open up warming or cooling centers, you also need to think about the animals. There's an animal side to it, there's transportation side to it. There's a lot more to it than just opening up a building. And a warming center in these guidelines is open during business hours most of the time. So you're still having that issue of sending those people to a home without power, on icy snowy roads and out in the most cold environments. So there's a lot more to it than just opening up a lobby during cold weather. So, and like the sheriff said, the triggers in this guide that we're working on haven't been met. If they do, we have a plan. I have a location already picked out and we can open one. We just haven't got there yet.
Thank you. Okay. Sure.
Before we move on, so just to give you guys a little bit of, you know, ease if you guys are thinking about this, when the Disaster Recovery Center leaves, that does not mean that we leave, right? CAL OES will be here for you guys till the end. You guys will be, Jeff, and I know you'll be included on it because you're the main point of contact for emergency services, but moving forward, you guys will be set up on an introductory individual assistance meeting for this disaster where you will have FEMA, CAL OES, HCD, SBA, Department of Social Services, all on this meeting to give you guys not only update your FEMA updates, right, your Individual and Household Programs amounts, the registration numbers, the other needs assistance amounts that have been approved, housing assistance, rental assistance. You guys will start receiving all of those reports and you will get that report explained to you on a weekly basis with all of the updates as well. And this is also a way for you guys to, even after the Disaster Recovery Center closes, to have a way to communicate any future unmet needs or anything that your survivors may be facing or anything that the county or cities may be facing as well. So all of those partners will be on those calls and that will start on a weekly basis for six weeks straight. And then as, you know, time goes on, you may, you scale down to every two weeks. So if there's individuals that would want to be included on those calls, please make sure to communicate that with Jeff because he will get the meeting invite since he is kind of our main point of contact for OES. But those reports will also start being provided to you guys on a weekly basis as well so you know what's going on in your community. This is also where they will speak about the ISAA that Ahmad said earlier, which is the Information Sharing Access Agreement, which if the county decides and the city decides to submit that ISAA with FEMA, you will be provided a case-by-case basis of the individuals who have applied for FEMA. You'll get, you know, the names, the addresses, the contact information. You'll get more of that nitty-gritty information and data if you do complete that ISAA with FEMA. Because like we said, confidentiality is huge when it comes to this process. So if that is something that the county and cities decide to move forward with, that will also be an option on these weekly calls as well. I just want to let you guys know that once, once we're gone, we're not gone. So you guys will have the continued support until, you know, obviously we get you guys where you need to be, so.
One more question. On the actual disaster damage to property, as time goes on, people may find or irrigation district are finding additional damage, does that require an amended application or does it automatically fall in the realm of possibility of reimbursement?
If it still fall on the original registration, they can call and add additional damages to an existing claim.
Thank you.
Yeah, your Disaster Recovery Center, are they like eight to five, Monday through Friday?
Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday.
Okay, I didn't get that written down. Through Saturday too?
Close Sundays.
Saturdays give those individuals who work right the day to be able to come in where they have more flexibility.
We appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Oh, was it? One more from the.
Dana Jorgensen, Senator Alvarado-Gill. I was going to be quiet today, but like my wife says, right? Couple thoughts. In regards to the warming centers, there's the library and Virginia had mentioned to me the hospital and the senior center. I'd forgotten about the senior center for the day. And those are things we're already paying for, so there is something there. I just had a question, is March sixteenth, is that a hard deadline?
So as of right now, the registration deadline for FEMA is March sixteenth. However, there has been a submission to extend that deadline by the state to FEMA. We're just waiting to be approved and/or denied. But the extension for registration has been submitted by the state to FEMA. But as of right now, as it stands, it's March sixteenth.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thought was with PG&E, you know, there's the care program, but that's based on having a lower income and if you don't meet that income, that's really hard to hit. But I would urge people to reach out to PG&E and ask them. I have that person's phone number too, we can ask. And just summary, I'm here, we're not going anywhere. People have questions, they can call our office in Sutter Creek, 267-5560. I'm there by myself, so leave a message. I will, I will get all those messages. Thank you, thanks for coming. Dana, thank you.
Okay, unless there's any more questions, let's move on to three B. Administrative agency discussion of possible action relative to presentation by Mr. George. I never say his name correctly, Coste Rico, Liaison for Amler County and US Small Business Administration Office. George, are you there? He's on Zoom.
Indeed, I am. I can't get my camera on though, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, if somebody could put the camera on, that'd be awesome.
We're looking at it right now. Hold on.
Can you see me? Okay.
We have to go through a couple steps.
Okay, there we go. It looks like we're...
There we go.
Hello, everybody. Uh, so, um, I, uh, first off, I just wanted to thank the Honorable County Board of Supervisors, Patrick Crewe, Richard Forster, uh, Jeff Brown, Frank Axe, and Brian Ornito, and especially County Administrator Officer Chuck Eily for all your help these last six weeks. Um, I did make an initial foray, uh, when this was a contiguous county. So my name is George Costerico, and I'm a public information officer for the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. So I heard a lot of questions today that I think I can answer some of those questions or steer people towards some resources. Um, but allow me to just go through some basics on the program, if that's okay with everybody. The first thing I want to, uh, thank is Supervisor Brown. Uh, you've been exceptionally helpful, uh, during this process. So has, uh, your OES Coordinator, Sergeant Bellotti. Excellent, excellent resources. Uh, Amador County is very fortunate to have, uh, such, uh, civic-minded and, uh, public safety-focused individuals. I can tell you, um, what we're seeing here in Amador County is similar to what, um, we saw in San Luis Obispo County. I was there for the last six weeks. I just got back on Friday, and they mobilized me to Amador after the declaration last Thursday. So, uh, the Small Business Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience is here following the President's major disaster declaration on January fourteenth. So what it covers is human loss, physical damage, and economic injury as a result of the severe winter storms, flooding, landslides, and mudslides that began on December twenty-second and into the new year in many parts of California. So this presidential, uh, declaration now covers Amador County as a primary or designated county. So what that means when I say primary or designated county is that our federal program provides low-interest federal disaster loans to assist businesses and residents that may not be insured or may be underinsured as a result of the severe winter storms, flooding, landslides, and mudslides that began December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. So here are the terms of what we offer. For individuals and families, this includes up to two hundred thousand dollars available in loans to repair or replace real estate damage for homeowners. And for both homeowners and renters, up to forty thousand dollars in loan availability to replace personal property. For businesses, which includes also nonprofit organization and places of worship, property damage of up to two million dollars is available to repair or replace real estate, machinery, and equipment, inventory, and other assets that were damaged or destroyed. Uh, we, they mentioned the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Process. That's known as EIDL. And that is also, uh, a, up to two million dollars with or without property damage for working capital needed that would not have been disrupted otherwise to help until normal operations resume due to disaster. So basically, the idea is, is that if a business has suffered walk-in traffic, online traffic, whatever their daily regimen is in terms of commerce, um, that we can, um, provide loans that make, can, uh, kind of make up that difference. So the interest rates can be as low as two-point-three-one-three percent for homeowners and renters, two-point-three-seven-five percent for private nonprofit organizations, and three-point-three-zero-five percent for businesses. And these are for terms up to thirty years. So the loan amounts and terms are set by the SBA and are based on each applicant's financial condition. We also have mitigation assistance for eligible SBA disaster loan borrowers who may choose to receive expanded funding to help mitigate their home or business. So, um, this is something I want to really emphasize to everybody listening here. We're so pleased to hear that a DRC or Disaster Recovery Center has been announced in your community. It's gonna be open on, uh, sounds like Thursday morning at eight AM. I absolutely encourage any resident of Amador County, if you suffered some kind of loss, or you believe you suffered a loss, or you may suffer a loss, to answer some of the questions from the, uh, county, uh, county supervisors. Uh, absolutely, please go down to the DRC. Uh, bring, drive your neighbors there. Um, if they have some ability, if they're older, if they can't drive, uh, they need to absolutely apply for physical damage by March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Now, uh, I heard the OES Coordinator suggest that that might be extended. Uh, that does happen. And the way things set up, just to explain the process, so when a declaration is made, the physical deadline is on or about sixty days. That's the kind of the bandwidth. That's the length of time. So as you know, Amador County got added later. There was originally five counties that were considered designated, and we had contiguous counties around that. Over time, we've added counties. So, uh, unfortunately, that deadline, that hard deadline does not shift unless there's an application made and approval made to extend that. So please, let's get the word out to everybody that if they feel like they've suffered a loss, please come down to the Disaster Recovery Center beginning, uh, Thursday at eight AM and find out what resources are available through FEMA, through SBA. Um, I'm pleased to hear that the state has, um, services there. I'm assuming the county's gonna have some services there in that room. Uh, we had something similar to that in San Luis Obispo. It was in the Veterans Hall. There must have been about forty different organizations there. And let me tell you, having a DRC makes a big difference. Uh, then I can tell you that in San Luis Obispo County, we had, um, let's say, just for Small Business Administration, as of last week, we had over three-hundred-and-sixty people walking in, inquiring and registering with SBA loans. As we speak, over a third of those have already been funded, so the process can move very quickly. Um, and, uh, so we really encourage people to, to come in and register and find out where resources are available, not just with SBA, but with FEMA and the other organizations that are there. Now, the second deadline is a longer deadline. That's the Economic Injury Disaster Loan one. That's October sixteenth. So that's something that I'll be reminding, uh, the community about, just because sometimes when you have a long deadline, you forget about stuff. So we just encourage people to complete the SBA application, even if they're not sure they need it. If approved, the loan becomes an option. It's kind of like being pre-qualified for a mortgage. So some people may not want to take on that extra debt, um, if they have to, if they, if they might need a loan. But the, the purpose of the SBA loans are to help those that don't have insurance or that are underinsured. Um, and this makes up the difference between the, between the, whatever the insurance covers and what the actual need is. Um, because this is the presidential declaration, we are partners with the, uh, Federal Emergency Management Agency, which also provides benefits for survivors, which you heard earlier. Uh, we encourage everyone who has or believes they have suffered a loss to start the process by registering with FEMA. So when you go in to the center, or if you go online, if you call, you really want to, um, uh, go to the center, start with FEMA, and then, uh, you start checking the boxes, and you go around the room, and you see what other resources are available, whether it's the state, or the county, or, or those kinds of things. So the fastest way to apply is wwwdisasterassistance.gov. You can also apply, as the FEMA Coordinator suggested, one-eight-hundred-six-two-one-three-three-six-two. Now, through that process, you can reach the Small Business Administration resources. But if you are only interested in SBA, there's several ways to apply. One way is virtually at disasterloanassistance.sba.gov website, or, uh, or by calling one-eight-hundred-six-five-nine-two-nine-five-five, or visiting the Disaster Recovery Center. I encourage the residents and business owners of, um, of, uh, everybody who's suffered a loss to please visit that Disaster Recovery Center. It's really important to start this process as soon as possible. Um, please let me know if you'd like me to provide outreach to your community in person or virtually to discuss the Disaster Assistant Federal Interest Loan Program. Um, I do have my email with the county, with the clerk, um, and my phone number. Um, one thing I, I do want to ask, um, I want to answer some questions, but, uh, I was doing some research coming into this last week, and I only found a couple of, uh, community service districts. And so I was wondering if I could work closely with the county assessor to get a full list of homeowners associations, any kind of a group where you guys are collaborating for services like fire, garbage pickup, those kinds of things. Because, um, I only found a couple of community service districts, whereas there was probably thirty of them in San Luis Obispo County. It was a lot easier to get ahold of the folks. And I know, uh, in Amador County, people really enjoy the rural lifestyle. And, uh, but there's, there may be, they may have suffered some damage, and we want to make sure that we get the word out as soon as possible to them. So at any rate, with that, I'm, uh, certainly willing to answer any questions, including some of the questions about private roads.
Yeah, this is Supervisor Brown. Um, one other thing I wanted you to add, as you talked to me about, was, uh, the USDA on, for cattle ranchers. You, you brought that up in our conversations.
Right, okay. So, uh, so, uh, the, uh, the, the Small Business Administration has resources available for the agriculture, aquaculture, and nursery communities. However, if you're growing vines, if you're growing grapes, if you're cat, if you're raising cattle, if you're growing grain, or any kind of true farming or ranching activities, I encourage folks, I'm hoping that USDA has a table at the DRC. And if they don't, I'm gonna certainly, um, ask FEMA to make sure that somebody's there. Uh, that will be a well-visited site because they have the very specific loan programs. I can tell you that I met with, uh, we had a meeting right before I left San Luis Obispo County with Congressman Jimmy Panetta, with the farmers, uh, the, the, uh, County Farm Commissioner and others. And there was a lot of questions about what, um, what insurance was out there, what kind of prop loss programs were available. Um, as you know, uh, Amador is very similar to San Luis Obispo County in terms of, um, it's changed over. Some of it's agricultural, more toward vineyards. You have, uh, you know, smaller vineyards, family-owned vineyards, um, and, uh, where you've got houses on the property, you know, private residences, and then you have the business. So I really encourage the, uh, anybody with agricultural interests to not only explore what the SBA offers, but also make sure that they register with USDA.
Okay, supervisors, any other questions? Yes.
Yeah, this Supervisor Forster, the, you mentioned, uh, SBA loans available for homeowners, businesses, renters, home, um... Are the loans available for special districts, say irrigation districts?
And that's, um, uh, I believe that there are, that, I, this is what I would encourage people to do. If you have a representative from an irrigation district, please come down to the, uh, Disaster Recovery Center and talk to the customer service representatives and bring the information. So for example, would you allow me to speak a little bit about private roads? Because this came up in Santa Cruz County, and a lot of the coastal counties have suffered a lot of, uh, damage.
Yes, please.
And that might answer some of the questions. Okay, so private roads are those that are not owned or operated or otherwise illegal responsibility of a federal, state, local, territorial, or tribal entity. These roads are ineligible. However, roads owned by a tribal government may be eligible, even if, even if they're not open to the general public. So here, uh, uh, this is, uh, where we, we can kind of finesse things. Uh, SBA disaster loans, um, uh, of up to two-hundred-thousand are available to homeowners to repair, replace damaged or destroyed real estate. Um, I, I mentioned the repairing and replacing damaged or destroyed personal property. The maximum is forty thousand dollars. Um, and I mentioned the interest rates. So, uh, associations include, but are not limited to, planned unit developments, cooperative association, road association, water associations, et cetera. Basic eligibility considerations. This is all comes from what's called, uh, our, um, uh, this is our, uh, uh, we have a, a document, standard operating procedures document that covers all this. This is all in the federal code. Uh, basic eligibility considerations. Eligibility, eligibility rests with those who owned or had responsibility to repair the damaged property at the time of the disaster. If a formal or legal association exists, if a legal entity owns the damaged property, the entity is the eligible applicant. So in this case, it could be a homeowners association, it could be an irrigation district. If a formal association does not exist, property owners who share legal responsibility for repair with one or more other property owners but had not formed an association at the time of the disaster may apply as individuals. Or they may elect to form an association accordance with state laws and apply as an association, even though the legal formalities are not yet complete. So, um, I really encourage, um, those of you to, uh, that are part of the water districts, that are part of the homeowners association, a representative come speak to not only FEMA, and if it's an ag situation, or water irrigation for, for, you know, for ranchers and those kinds of things, talk to USDA, but also talk to the Small Business Administration. Uh, what happens is we, we intake, we intake the information in the field, and then a loan processor, um, on the other end, looks at the stuff very carefully. And will ask questions. So there's gonna be some back and forth that'll go. Um, the home, the home loans tend to go much quicker. Uh, the business ones are a little more complicated because they will ask for supplementary information. And, um, I want to also, um, really emphasize the privacy, uh, that we extend to all applicants. And so this is, uh, not something that we're gonna be sharing a lot of detail. Um, every situation is different. So, uh, for example, the situation of the woman that's living in the, um, the, that's what looks like, sounds like a commercial property, a hotel, living upstairs, but then has, um, some private, part of it is a private residence. That is something that she, that they should come into and talk to SBA about.
Okay, thank you, George. Any other supervisor?
I'm...
Go ahead.
No, one last thing I would say. I'm gonna absolutely be there, um, on, uh, Thursday morning, and I do apologize I did not come in person. I meant to. Uh, you know, we had the snow last night. Uh, Jackson City Council, I was gonna be speaking before them. That got canceled, that meeting. Um, and, um, I was advised to just go ahead and do a Zoom call and be safe. So I apologize I'm not there in person, but you're gonna see a lot of me in the next, uh, uh, two to six weeks.
Sounds good, George. Any other supervisor? Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a news release dated February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. It looks like some of, um, new disaster loans can be zero percent interest. Is that correct?
So, uh, so what, uh, what's happened is, uh, the, uh, the, the very bottom of the, of a press release or a thing I sent out, I hope to read it. Um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna pull up an email. I don't have it memorized. Um, but this is important, and Supervisor, I really appreciate you bringing that up. Hold on one second. Um, let's see here. Okay, so basically, uh, so our, our administrator, Isabella Casillas Guzman, announced a policy change which grants twelve months of no payments and zero interest. And this pertains to all disaster loans approved in response to disasters declared on or after September twenty-one, twenty-two through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. So this covers SBA disaster loans currently available for Hurricane Fiona, Hurricane Ian. But however, this policy change is intended to, to help assist disaster survivors, um, across the country. Um, so thank you for bringing that, that up, uh, board member.
Yes, it's, it's a twelve-month period of, of no, no interest in.
Yes, absolutely. And then the interest terms begin after that.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, board members? Anybody from the public? Okay, anybody from Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Yeah, George, you can put your hand down now.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, it was, I wasn't sure at what point where I was on the agenda. When we had the OES and FEMA folks, I felt, uh, uh, you know, I want to make sure you knew I was here because I wanted to try and answer some of those questions there. Uh, and I want to just thank our partners, federal and state partners, for quickly pulling together the Disaster Recovery Center. Um, although we're, we're co-partners with FEMA, uh, as a federal agency, a lot of, um, what's considered the first responder is what FEMA and OES does, and we're part of the second stage, which is called recovery. So thank you very much, uh, folks, for getting that together.
Thank you, George. Okay, it doesn't look like they have any more questions. So thank you, George, for, uh, speaking before us, and truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're on to three B one, the, uh, addendum for Sutter Creek. Oh, excuse me, not Sutter Creek. Plymouth Water and Sewer Infrastructure System. Do we have, do we have somebody online?
Mr. Wise, um, go ahead and unmute.
Great. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Sim. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, I'd like to also, uh, point out that, uh, Doug Sim, uh, a member of the Plymouth City Council, I believe is there with you this morning, and I apologize for my inability to join you in person. But, um, I do appreciate, um, all the efforts, particularly by Supervisor Ornato, uh, in bringing this before you. Um, this is a resolution, um, that we are asking the board to consider in support, um, of an appropriations request that the City of Plymouth is submitting to, um, our two U.S. Senators for an earmarked appropriations, um, uh, under the USDA, uh, annual appropriations bill that would assist us in repairing our, our aging water and sewer lines uh, in the downtown Plymouth area, uh, and to prevent the annual expense that we are having to pay to just patch and repair these aging clay pipelines. Um, and, um, uh, one of the, uh, U.S. Senators appropriations request forms actually requires us to provide letters of support or recommendation on, or a resolution from, um, a regional or larger government entity such as, uh, county government, in addition to that, which the City of Plymouth will also do.
Okay, any questions from the board members on this resolution?
I, I have a question. Was there any fund ever established in Plymouth for replacement of the pipeline? And it's pretty routine to have that done. Would you have an answer to that?
I think Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims is gonna address that, I believe. Oh, I misspoke. You know, um, I believe they do have... You know, I believe they do have some money there, not a lot. They have some there for all repairs and maintenance. I don't think there's tons. It's a lot of older people live in Plymouth.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to add a few, oh, good morning.
Morning.
Supervisors.
Go ahead and state your name.
A couple of things that...
Excuse me, sir. Go ahead and speak your, say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was already, thank you. I'm Douglas Simms, I'm Vice Mayor of Plymouth, California. Thank you. A couple items that maybe I'd like to highlight is the fact that these aging sewer lines are made of clay. They're roughly 80 years old. Unfortunately, back then, they, when they, when they put the pipelines in, this clay and the water and the sewer, they put them in the same ditch. And these clay lines are breaking up and they're cracking. And we're afraid they may be, at some point, compromising our water lines because they're also breaking and leaking and so forth. So we're pretty concerned about that. In the addition to this, that the water lines are leaking, we think about 10% a year. We're losing 10% of our water through these leaks. We have roughly 90,000 linear feet of water and sewer lines, about 45,000 linear feet each. And again, they're 80 years old. They need replacing. It's a, it's a serious problem. And the city, the residents of Plymouth do not have the ability to fund this project. We're, we're, the engineers have put a number roughly of $200 a linear foot to replace these lines, each of them. We're going to the two senators with an appro, to their appropriations committees in hopes of getting somewhere around $18 million to replace these lines. We're not asking the county for any, any money. All we're asking for is your support in our, in our, in our resolution. I think you all have this in front of you.
Yes.
And I'm sure you probably all read it. I don't have all the answers, but maybe you have a few questions for me that you'd like to...
Anybody have any questions?
Well, I guess I don't see any harm in supporting this. I think you're trying to take a huge bite of the apple. I know ACTC, Transportation, when we asked for federal funding, it was in the neighborhood of about $5 million. So I don't know how this is going to come across to our senators, but it can't hurt to try and support it.
Well, we're of the opinion that if you, if you ask for less, you'll get less. And we hope, we hope that they'll help support us. It's, we're a small rural community that most of the people are on fixed incomes. They, unfortunately, our, the average water bill in Plymouth is around $150, $160 a month. The water is only about 35 bucks. The rest of it is, we're paying for two bonds. One is the pipeline that's coming in from the tanner plant into our 50,000 gallon tank. And the other is, we had to upgrade our sewer plant about eight years ago to tune about $10 million. So those bonds are still, are still active, and the residents are still paying that. And that's why their, their water bill is so high. Of course, you know, the average person looks at their, the total, the bottom, they figure that's what their water bill is. Well, it is.
I think also maybe should look at, especially if you get this appropriations request, getting a healthy fund started for the future. Because, you know, what's been done here might last another 50 or 100 years, but at some point, the town will be back to the same, same spot if they don't have a pretty good maintenance fund.
Is that a question?
Nope, just a state message.
No, I'm sorry, okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, you know, the work that's done to our water and sewer lines are mainly done by the Amador Water Agency.
Right.
That, when we have a break, they come out and fix it, and then they give us a bill. That's, they've done a wonderful job keeping this aged system up and going. It's only going to get worse.
In my water, water system up in the high country, we've got a water leak right now, but mm, two foot of snow. Where's the water? We don't know where it is.
I know Murvasini worked on your system break one time, and he said every time they touched one piece, it broke, and they touched the next piece, it broke, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I know, city of Plymouth, you do have a, they've got a pretty major problem there. And like you were saying, you got the, probably not the greatest planning or engineering, but they're having the pipes in the same, pretty much the same location, your water and your septic, side by side, kind of.
Well, today you probably could do it because the products that they're going to replace these old clay pipes with will be much better. And obviously, there's a, there's a benefit to open up one trench and putting both back in versus two trenches and open the whole, the whole town up, the whole street up, so.
Yeah, the clay pipe, so it doesn't work well.
Mr. Chair, you ready for a motion?
I am.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution in support of federal appropriations requests for the repair, replacement, and maintenance of the Plymouth sewer, water and sewer infrastructure systems.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you. I thank you, and Plymouth thanks you.
Okay, let's see. Let's go on to 3C, Public Health, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Adoption, Resolution Terminating and Declaration of Local Health Emergency Related to COVID-19. Do we have Dr. Kerr?
She isn't currently on Zoom that I can see.
Okay.
Do we really need her?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think she was planning on.
Okay.
Pretty clear, and she explained it at the last meeting, I think.
Does anybody have any questions? Nope. Anybody from the public? Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Do I, can I get a motion?
Move that we approve the resolution terminating the local emergency declaration related to COVID-19.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Five, zero. Well, do we want, is that enough time?
I think it's interesting, though, that I went to a Comanche Homeowners Association meeting on Saturday and explained that we were going to approve this today. And one of their board members has COVID right now, so.
Yeah. Well, let's move on to 3D, Amador Fire Safe Council, Community Fuel Break Program. Come on up.
Thank you very much for having me today. My name is Amanda Watson. I work as the coordinator for the Amador Fire Safe Council, as well as the executive director for the Amador Resource Conservation District. We have two grants that we're currently applying for funding to CAL FIRE 4. I'll speak to the Fire Safe Council grant first. I think that's the first on the agenda.
Yeah, we're going to, actually, we're going to take care of both of your things at both, I mean, right now, so you've got them both, so.
Sounds good.
Off to where we go.
Sounds good. So first, I'll speak to the Fire Safe Council grant. We have been, we at the Fire Safe Council have been working the last two years to develop what we call the Community Fuel Break Program. And through that, we are working with several communities, mostly firewise communities. We now have 25 firewise communities and more coming online all the time. And the hope with this is to develop both strategic, strategically located fuel breaks, but also fuel breaks that are supported by the local community and provide grassroots support for these fuel breaks. That helps us get rates of entry and also, you know, helps to raise the level of awareness in those communities that work's going to be getting done to protect multiple communities and the county as a whole, infrastructure, roadways. And so these, these fuel breaks are proposed to us by the community, and then we actually have funding to have a forester. And in many cases, multiple foresters and multiple people go out and do mapping surveys or mapping exercises, desk talk exercises, to look at other fire history, other fuel breaks, other work that's being done, habitable structures, topography, to see the most suitable way to adapt what the community has proposed and make it a reality on the ground that's going to serve as, and I should, maybe you should mention, a fuel break is basically removing understory vegetation to act as a, somewhat of a barrier to fire, removing the vegetation to hopefully slow it down, and also emergency personnel can use it as a line to defend from. And so the Community Fuel Break that we're looking to fund now is the Ohio Hill Fuel Break, which is about 80 acres. We've already treated 10 acres of it through the Fire Safe Council, through PG&E money. And we're hoping to treat 80 more acres. I do have some maps, if you guys are interested, I submitted those. That one is along China Graveyard Road, off of China Gate Road, and it is, it comes up to the Jackson City Line and as well as near a mobile home park and some of our other firewise communities. And we've talked with many of the landowners there, so we have support for that fuel break. We're also looking to fund the Volcano Hills Fuel Break, which is kind of a multi-pronged fuel break that actually wraps around the town of Volcano and also protects several other firewise communities. So we're hoping to get funding to plan for those as well as implement those. We, the proof of concept that we had with the River Pines Fuel Break, we were able to get, apply for funding earlier in 2022, received funding, got CEQA done, and implemented all in the same year, which is kind of unheard of, at least for us, for these types of projects. So we think it's a good proof of concept, and we're going to be asking for about a mil, just over $1 million for the implementation of this. The grant is due March 15th. And I do want to say that we were going to also include the Upper Rancheria Fuel Break. But through the planning with the community, informing CAL FIRE of this project, they have actually decided to direct award those funds. So we're getting $950,000 for a direct award to fund that fuel break. And I think that really speaks to this process and our relationships with CAL FIRE and the trust that we have that we'll be able to implement that, this project in the shorter timeframe that comes with a direct award. So that is really good news, but we still have the two other fuel breaks that we're going to be applying for funding for. And I'd love to ask the Board of Supervisors to support that effort.
There was rumor that Mount Crossman is one of the, another down the pipeline that you're thinking about. Is that true, or?
I am not, I can't speak to that right now. We have so many projects going on. We, I know the next one, I will say, that we are working on is a fuel break outside of Butte Mountain or around, kind of between where the electrifier was and Butte Mountain community. So we are working with them to develop, but we are always accepting project forms. We're going to be launching our new website in the next couple of weeks, and so the form will hopefully be easier to, to apply. And what we do is we, we have a committee that reviews all of the projects, including ingress and egress, fuel breaks, and then whatever projects the community might think are necessary. And we try to line that up with funding or that we may have already or go out for additional funding. So I can't speak to that one specifically, but I will definitely keep you guys updated.
Okay, I think the Fire Safe Council does a wonderful job on these projects, and I think there's great benefit. I do have a little problem that CAL FIRE is funding this, but then CAL FIRE with the Office of the State Fire Marshal give no credit to it when they're looking at the high fire severity zones because they don't include this mitigation that's being done in their calculations and in their ultimate designations.
Right. Yeah, and we, I did talk a little bit with Megan Sheeline about that, and I guess those higher, the fire hazard mitigation zones are meant to be just looking at topography and the landscape, not any actual work that's done. So yeah, I thought, I mean, that is true.
But insurance companies are also base part of their, their feeling through some of this, so it hurts us in another direction, and so.
That, I just have a really, really a problem with that when they don't consider the home hardening, the, any recent wildfires that occurred, the fuel reduction efforts. They're looking, and plus they have the short, the insurance industry involved in this process without including local governments. Which to me was a slap in the face to local government. You have the, basically, you have the fox in the hen house on, on this issue when they're trying to determine these new designations.
Yeah.
Well, just to add on to that, the worst wildfires I've seen were in fairly urban areas. I look at the one in Napa that destroyed countless homes, and it wasn't in an area that's remote like us. So I don't get it.
Anybody, other supervisor?
Do you want me to speak to the RCD project?
Give me, I think we'll hit this one, and then we'll go to the next one.
Sorry.
If we can do it quick enough. Anybody from the public? Anybody from Zoom?
No.
Well, could I get a motion on this?
Yeah, I'd make a motion approving a letter of support for Amador Fire Safe's grant, application to CAL FIRE.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'm running out of a little bit of time here, so I need, I've got a 10:30 deadline. Do you think we can run through this real quick?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go on to, we moved this next one for the Amador Resource Conservation District, Amador Defense Space Assistance Program, and we'll go on.
So the, the Amador Resource Conservation District is looking to fund a pilot project of about $500,000 to $600,000. We're still working a little bit on the budget to develop, to put in a grant application at March 15th to help low-income and seniors deal with their defensible space requirements through CAL FIRE. As we all know, I think that the 100-foot defensible space needs to be treated. CAL FIRE is now allowing grantors to actually work within that defensible space. We weren't able to in the past. And so we, the Resource Conservation District and the Fire Safe Council get calls all the time for assistance to manage, help manage this landscape, this critical defensible space landscape around homes. So we're, we're going to be putting in, hopefully, a, with the support of the board, a defensible space grant to help do brush clearing around homes as well as deal with hazard trees. And what we consider a hazard tree is a tree that would fall on an inhabited structure within that, within that defensible space. And we all, I think we might all know that the defensible space requirements are likely are changing to include zero foot or a five-foot zero use area. And so we're hoping to also use this funding to work with master gardeners, UC Cooperative Extension, and our other partners to provide education, including demonstration location and outreach at the fair and smoke chaser events, to provide education about those changes to the defensible space and ways that people can do that, as well as home hardening.
And just a curious question, I don't know if you know or not, that five-foot zero space, does that include going up to decks?
You know, I, I don't want to speak to it right now because I'm not as well-versed on it. But yeah, I do believe there is information in the new requirements about what your deck can be made of. There's a lot of new changes in that, in the new requirements.
I know most of these grants look at areas that are heavily wooded, but it also, what I saw, would apply to areas with just grasslands too. So could something like the Comanche area be a possible model for this project?
Yes, so this, a lot of our projects, you're right, are focused kind of up-country. This project would be a countywide program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, and do anybody have any more questions? The public? Zoom? Okay.
I'd move approval of a letter of support with the chairman's signature for this program.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Amanda, all the work you do. Well, let's take a seven-minute break, and we'll be back here at 10:35. For the public hearing. Lot 222 and Lot 223, Silver Pines, Unit Number Three.
Excuse me, a little slower to write my name. I'm Roger Piddo, County Surveyor, and today we're here to hopefully approve the merger and the abandonment of a public utility easement for Mr. Leishman. A little bit of history on this is their house is situated in an angle on the lot, so they have difficulty getting into their garage without crossing over the lot line that we're merging. They originally did a boundary line adjustment with a neighbor who used to own the adjoining lot. That was not enough room. So, my understanding is they purchased the lot, they want to merge that line so they can make a nice entry into their garage. And it, there's a PUE that needs abandonment that doesn't serve anybody but that particular lot. There's other easements around it that suffice to take care of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay.
So, open public hearing?
Yeah, it's open public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing?
Anybody on Zoom? Nope. Okay. Motion to close public hearing. Okay. All in favor to close public hearing?
Aye.
Who was on the second?
You were the second.
Well. It's Richard.
I thought it was Richard.
I'll let Brian have the motion for the.
No.
It's Richard.
He did, and then you asked whether he was Zoomer.
Why don't we just go with Brian? You can make the second on the next one.
Brian feels left out sometimes over here.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the recommendation and of the surveying department for the merger of lots 222 and 223, Silver Lake Pines, Unit Number Three.
Okay.
And the abandonment of the public utility easement?
And abandonment of the public utility easement, yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Thank you, Roger. Roger that.
All right. Okay. Let's go back to 3F, Planning Department. Final determination of the Board's Chair's approval of a temporary waiver to allow Jackson Valley Quarry to operate outside their authorized hours and days of operation during an emergency, allowing the quarry to use permit conditions of approval.
Wasn't that two days ago?
Yep. Still got to dot our i's and cross our t's.
Good morning. Chuck Beatty with the Planning Department. Excuse me. Last month, you issued a temporary waiver for Jackson Valley Quarry to do, or to be open outside of their normal operating hours of six to six, Monday through Friday, in order to, in order for them to be able to have rock available for various storm-related repairs. And again, Reclamation District 800 is, was under the gun to get a levy project completed by the, by March 1st. They submitted a request to the quarry that was forwarded to Supervisor Brown, and as Chair, he authorized that temporary waiver of the operating hours through February 26. But as with the last, all of these, all of these require that they go to the Board for the, essentially Board ratifying the Chair's authorization for those temporary waivers.
Any questions?
We had no complaints. Did we either that time period?
Either one of them, no, we didn't.
Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Could I hear a motion?
Well, I'd make a motion to approve the waiver allowing Jackson Valley Quarry to operate outside approved hours.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 5-0.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Discussion of possible, excuse me, 3G, discussion of possible action relative to the Chairman's signature on a letter of support of HR 934 as it relates to requiring the Secretary of Agriculture to carry out activities to suppress wildfires. HR 934 language and previous support letter from HR 960 are attached. So, Senator McClintock's office reached out and asked if we would support this.
Yeah, I think it's kind of a no-brainer. I know it's, we had the Tamrac fire up there, and we saw what happened there with the foresters letting a.
Right.
One little small fire burn for weeks on end and monitor it with a helicopter, which was, in my book, what they did up there is pretty much bullshit. We're in a severe drought, severe fire weather, and they're, they were monitoring one. And matter of fact, I even just talked to one person who knew something, who supposedly said he knew a guy in the helicopter who was telling his boss that we got to put this thing out or it's going to get away on us. Anyway, so I think this legislation would be a helpful deal. Only thing I, I would say is, I think we need it, but we also need to be doing masticating and prescribed burns in our forest. I don't want to see all burns stop at some point, but when it's bad fire weather, yeah, they should, they should suppress them. So, do Zoom yet?
No. Anybody on Zoom want to talk on this subject?
No.
So, I'm calling for a motion.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we send a letter of support for HR 690.
934.
HR, yeah, 934, excuse me. Let's look at the other holder one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. On to 3H. Discussion of possible action relative to the Chairman's signature on a letter of support for AB 400, which would make the current rules allowing design-build projects to become permanent. CSAC is sponsoring the bill and asking for support from the counties. Do these quite often?
Supervisor Forster, quick question. Oh, you're our CSAC guy. It had a sunset on it in 2025, but this new bill does not have a sunset?
I don't think so. And I think the only reason they had that sunset is that's the only way they could get it passed the first time.
Okay. All right. I wouldn't clear on it.
Yeah, and I think the thing is, it, it allows them to do design-build, doesn't mean you have to. So, I don't see harm in it.
Yeah.
Might be some good.
I'm just a fan of sunsets.
Anybody on Zoom?
Has a sunrise.
Yeah. How this plays out is going to be dependent on where the unions take a stance on it because Sacramento is basically run by the unions more than anybody else. So, with that, I would move we support AB 400 and authorize the Chairman to put a signature on a letter.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 5-0. Now, on to.
Addendum?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we're going to, we'll do the minutes right quick, and then we'll do the addendum. Review of possible approval of February 14th Board Supervisor meeting minutes. Any changes?
Minor corrections.
Minor corrections?
Likewise.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with minor corrections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, the last addendum item, 3J, which was 1A Addendum Assembly Bill 338, discussion of possible action relative to Chairman Senator's signature of a letter of opposition regarding the subject legislation as it relates to Section 10720 of the Labor Code. Supervisor Neto, you wanted this on the?
Yeah, something we were talking about down at RCRC, and it's been around before. And what is like doing our, our hazard tree mitigation work in the rural counties, there's been a finding that's not a prevailing wage type job. And that's, that was found a while back. And so, that means you probably get done a lot cheaper, and you see a lot more of your small businesses bidding the jobs. And this legislation is trying to make it work. Has to be a prevailing wage project, and it'd raise the cost up substantially. And you'd probably see a lot of your small businesses not even bid on them. So, that's why I was wanting to take a, oh, a stance opposing this legislation.
I think this is a prime example of a union-driven bill. I would say that our legislator proposing it, Agar Curry, has no concept of what's going on in our forests. And, and I do have a question, Greg. On the last page 404, where they say at the bottom, no reimbursement is required by this act pursuant to the Government Code of the California Constitution because the only cost that may be incurred by a local agency or school district will be incurred because this act creates a new crime or infraction, eliminates a crime or infraction, or changes the penalty for a crime or infraction within the meaning of the Government Code. So, is there any way we can get around this? Because they constantly say this puts a. Because they constantly say this puts a, um, this puts, has an impact monetarily on local government, but then they say, we're just going to say it doesn't have an impact. And they utilize this scheme in a lot of these bills to avoid, uh, the, the state paying for the extra impact of us having the higher prevailing wage?
Well, it, you, you know, that's just their sort of view of it. It doesn't make it binding. There's always the possibility of, of, um, basically challenging it and, and, and arguing that it's, that it is actually a mandate, uh, enforcing them to, to cover the cost, although, um, I, I don't know what the other prevailing wage, I mean, there's a lot of state law that requires payment of prevailing wage. I don't know how those were resolved.
Well, I'd like our representatives, RCRC, to take this back and have them look at it because this is a prime example. It's going to put severe additional costs on counties. Is there any way it can be challenged?
This, this bill passed the legislature last session and then was vetoed by the governor. This exact provision.
But it's being brought back again.
It's being brought back.
Yeah.
So Supervisor Netto, if you could take this to RCRC and, uh, see if they could challenge that there will be an impact here, and you can't just override it with the standard language that they're putting in a lot of bills now, so the state doesn't have to cover the impact.
I, I can do that.
At some point, somebody's got to challenge it, otherwise we just sit back and let them keep, um, abusing their authority. And I, I think it is just a straight abuse of authority to do something like this.
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone on Zoom whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Heisenbrot, when you're ready.
Thanks, Supervisors. Uh, just for the record, uh, if this bill were to pass, it would double the cost of the work that the Fire Safety Council does, or look that another way, we could only do half as much as, as, as we receive for the grant. So it's, it's, it's not a good concept. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Okay. Looking for a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we send the letter, um, opposing AB 338.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five-zero. And that will close out our meeting. And I want to thank everybody for helping with everything that's going on here.